Well, good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for joining us today for the hearing from the Department of Development and the Development Committee regarding the 2016 Consolidated Action Plan. I'm just going to get right to it, and I'm going to ask the directors here, thank you first, all the directors and deputy directors from Health and Wreckin' Parks and Finance and Development for being here. But due to a time constraint, I'm going to ask E.J. Thomas to come up first from Habitat for Humanity. He has a time issue, just to maybe address council, I'll be respectful of that. You're doing such great work in the community, and hopefully we'll get him back to building some houses here for folks that desperately need them. So the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Well, this will be very quick, and I'm representing the Housing Alliance of Central Ohio. And I'll leave you with a copy of this. The city's projected 19 affordable homes and 700 rehab units. Certainly is vital to the community here. As you know, 63% of extremely low-income folks spend more than half of their income on housing, and the average rent for a two-bedroom apartment is $811. The point that I want to make with my testimony here, the takeaway, is that we are, as Habitat and other members of the alliance, we are very, very pleased with our relationship with the Development Department and how they've helped us with many, many homes over the last few years. The point is, there's just not enough. And in order to solve the issue, the local resources are needed to solve this for our community. We look forward to working with the city to find additional sources of money to help address the need. As you know, in what we put out publicly here a couple of weeks ago, we figure we're about 54,000 units down across the board, and the alliance's goal is over the next 10 years to drop that by 2,700 units a year. And that's going to take a lot of dollars to help make that happen. So with that, I say thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Thomas. And we're going to be hearing about housing and some of the investments that this plan is going to be making into housing portfolio to directly address some of the things that you referenced. And this should be a priority, and will be a priority in the City of Columbus, to bridge that gap that you identified. And I'm thankful for the fact that the housing community has come together to form the alliance to streamline and really focus as a group on what we can do to tackle this issue. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you very much.
Just a reminder to folks in the audience, if you would like to pull a speaker slip, there's blue slips over by the door. Just feel free to drop them in between now and the end of the hearing. We'll get you a chance. Three minutes to speak, if you'd like to. The first speaker that is not on the speaker slip but actually invited to speak is Paul Rakoski, the Director of Finance. Director?
Thank you, Chairman Klein, for the opportunity to present the 2016 Action Plan, the proposed budget, tonight at the hearing. I'm going to go over and do a general overview of the budget, and then I'll speak very, very briefly on finances, a small piece of the budget as well. The City of Columbus is an entitlement jurisdiction. We receive federal funds from HUD to support local community development and affordable housing activities. The federal block grant programs that provide these resources include the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, the Home Investment Partnership Program, known as the Home Grant, and then the Emergency Solutions Grant, what we call the ESG Grant, and the Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Grants, or HOPWA. As a condition of receiving these funds, the City of Columbus is required by HUD to submit a five-year consolidated plan, and that outlines the city's housing and community development needs and priorities. In 2014, a lot of folks here at the city and in the community worked hard to develop the current 2015 through 2019 consolidated plan, and that serves as a document that guides the priorities and the expenditure of these various grants. The 2016 Action Plan, for the four grants, if you look, we have a total here of a little over 13.2 million. We must yearly submit grant applications to HUD for these grants, and this is what's known as our Action Plan. The 2016 Proposed Action Plan outlines the city's grant resources, the yearly budgets, and then there's a description of proposed programs and activities within each of those grants. CDBG is the largest of all of the grants, and the proposed CDBG budget for 2016 is $8,456,268. Of that amount, 76%, or a little over 6.4 million, represents new HUD entitlement monies. The balance of the revenue to the program, or to the grant, is program income and prior year carryover. The city unfortunately is estimating a 7.34% decrease over the 2015 funding levels. That a dollar figure represents a decrease of $597,097 over this year's 2015 budget, and that is almost entirely due to a decrease in the available carryover from going from savings this year into next year's available resources. CDBG monies are designed to assist low-to-moderate income residents and eliminate slum and blighted conditions within the city. There are some restrictions on CDBG funds. The regulations limit the amount of funding that can be used for public service-type activities. These activities include youth, health, and homeless services. No more than 15% of CDBG funds can be spent on public services. And you'll see with both, these are what we call the caps within the program. We budget, try not to go all the way up to the cap, so we don't ever go all the way up to the 15%, just to ensure that there's flexibility during the budget year in case there are needs or changes that occur within the budget. These regulations also limit the amount of funding that can be spent on administrative and planning activities, so no more than 20% of CDBG funds can be spent on administrative and planning activities. There is, within the Action Plan document, for folks out in the audience, on page 69, there are a list of programs that make up the public service and admin planning caps. Those are identified in the plan, so that if folks want to take a closer look, they can take a closer look on page 69. The Home Investment Partnership Fund is budgeted in 2016 at $3,340,709. The entitlement funding is projected to be level-funded from this year's 2015 funding. Home program income is projected at $300,000. These funds are administered through the Development Department, are used primarily to increase homeownership opportunities and for the preservation and production of affordable rental housing. Within the Home Fund, the Partnership Fund, there are also some caps and floors. We work out in the community with community housing development organizations, also known as CHODOs. They'll be funded through these home monies. There is an operating support cap for the CHODOs of 5%, that approximately $152,000. There is also a CHODO project set aside. These are required project dollars. There's a 15% floor on that, and that floor equates to $456,106. There's also an administrative cap of 10%, a little over $330,000. And then the Affordable Housing Opportunity Fund itself will be funded at a little bit under $2.4 million, and those are also all project dollars. The Emergency Solutions Grant is funded at $595,608, and it's used to coordinate and stabilize the base funding of emergency shelter programs within the city. This is level funding from 2015. The Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Grant, the HOPWA Grant, is also flat-funded. It's budgeted at $820,803. The grant is administered through Columbus Public Health. The funds are used to address the housing needs of low-income persons infected with HIV/AIDS in their families. This program operates in an eight-county area. So if we look at the total funding, a little bit over 13.2 million for all of the grants. This proposed 2006 budget, it provides for four departments to implement programs and contracts that involve housing, economic development, social services, and planning activities. The proposed budget lists the programs, their respective funding level, and also provides a very useful program narrative description, and that starts on page 33 of the Action Plan. Not all of the programs are administered directly by the city. Some are done through community agencies, and we anticipate entering into approximately 25 sub-recipient agency contracts. I want to talk a little bit about the public process. It's very important to this overall process of putting the Action Plan and the Consolidated Plan together. We began a 30-day public notice process on October 3, 2015, to inform the public of the proposed Consolidated Plan and the Action Plan Budget and the Citizen Participation Plan, and, most importantly, to receive any comments. We'd like to receive comments no later than November 1, 2015, but obviously, the earlier we get the comments, the sooner we can share those with yourself and council members and the mayor, and then be able to address and answer any questions. And then we hope to have the proposed 2006 Action Plan Budget adopted by council on November 16. Some additional information: we do have hard copies of the proposed 2015 through 2019 Consolidated Plan, as well as the 2016 Proposed Action Plan Budget and the Citizen Participation Plan in the Finance Office. These can all be received by calling our office at (614) 645-7492, or all of these documents can be downloaded from the city's website. Just go to the Finance Department under the Grants Management section, and all those documents are also available there. For any comments, we can take those comments, they can be sent via mail, to the City of Columbus Department of Finance and Management at 90 West Broad Street, Columbus, Ohio, 43215, and make those to the attention of Philip Carter. Or we can take those through email, to Phil's email address, which is P D Carter, C A R T E R, at columbus.gov. And then, very quickly, the Department of Finance and Management's budget is a small piece of the overall funding included in the Action Plan. The Grants Management staff is funded at a little over $470,000. The staff that works under Phil Carter, and they do a great job. They're responsible for numerous areas of the grant administration, for the four grant programs and other HUD grant programs, and they do this through budget development, management of the financial resources, very important aspects of regulatory compliance, and then HUD reporting and monitoring, which is very important in regard to working with HUD. The other piece of the budget and finance is the loan servicing contract. It's budgeted at $95,000. We do contract out for loan collection servicing of the city's housing and economic development loan portfolios, and we do that through AmeriNational Community Services, Inc. And with that, that concludes my testimony, and I can take any questions.
Thank you, Director. Again, to folks that want to speak, there are speaker slip opportunities. You can grab a speaker slip. The next person we have to present is Director Steve Shoney, Department of Development.
Thank you, Chairman Klein. First, while we're waiting for the PowerPoint to come up, I want to begin by thanking Director Rakoski and Phil for all the work they put on this, put in on the CDBG budget in particular. They do a great job, and they're great partners with us. And so I do want to, though typically I'm not thanking him either publicly or privately, I will choose to thank the Finance Director in this one case. The Department of Development's CDBG budget for 2016 is $6.891 million and supports 40 full-time staff. This level of funding represents a 7.7% decrease from the 2015 budget. The Home budget for 2016 is $3.4 million, and that includes $300,000 in program income. For the Home budget, it's important to point out, though it's not shown on this slide, that if you go all the way back to 2011, the Home budget was $4.6 million in 2011. That's a roughly 25% decrease in availability of home funds for the city's critical housing needs. Between the 7.7% decrease we've taken this year and the continuing slide that we expect to see in home funds, it does create a number of challenges for us in creating the kind of housing that our first speaker was talking about tonight. The Emergency Solutions Grant is funded, as Director Rakoski said, at $595,000, and is used to coordinate and stabilize the base of funding for emergency shelter programs. Finally, the 2016 CDBG budget allows the Department of Development to focus its efforts on the core mission of the department and to address priorities in the Consolidated Plan. Those are economic development, housing, and neighborhoods. Some of the activities central to our mission in the neighborhoods area are funding for the Neighborhood Design Center. This budget will include $143,000 in funding for NDC. Funding for our critical code enforcement and environmental nuisance abatement programs comes in at $1.1 million, and then support for the land redevelopment program in this budget for CDBG is $431,000. In the housing area, we have a bit more of a breakout on this for you on the slide. The Affordable Housing Opportunity Fund makes up the largest portion of these funds at $1.6 million. These funds also support accessibility modifications, emergency repair programs, vacant property prevention, chores for the elderly and deaf services, and then miscellaneous contract services. The miscellaneous contract services is essentially all of the title search, loan documentation funds, all of the, if there's anything that in our work in housing is glamorous, this is not the glamorous part. This is the hard work of making sure that all of our appraisals and titles are in place. Through these programs, 700 households will receive rehabilitation assistance in order to create decent, safe, and affordable housing in Columbus. In the Economic Development Group, we will, this funding includes $72,000 for the Neighborhood Economic Development Fund, which supports business associations along Long Street, Mount Vernon Avenue, Main Street, Parsons Avenue, Franklinton, and the Hilltop. Looking back to 2015 to talk about some of the things that were accomplished last year with the CDBG and Home Funds. In the housing area, we provided down payment assistance on 52 loans and grants. Nine home sales were made through, to low-income buyers. Home compliance monitoring was completed on 45 rental projects. $152,000 was provided to the Community Development Collaborative to fund operating support for five community housing development organizations, or CHODOs. In the Homeowner Services Center, the CDBG funds supported 247 chores jobs totaling $191,000, and 12 deaf modification jobs. Four vacant property prevention jobs were completed and are in progress. 333 emergency repair jobs were completed, for a total of $297,000. These are critical repairs to keeping people safe in their homes. In our efforts to reduce homelessness, these funds supported the Rebuilding Lives Program, the Safety Net Program, and tenant-based rental assistance. In Economic Development, the CDBG funds supported 21 loans, 19 grants in the NCRAs, and supported staff to do 90 business retention and expansion visits. Those are visits that our staff do to go out and meet with existing businesses in Columbus, to make sure, number one, that they're complying with the terms of the assistance that we've given them previously, as well as seeing what opportunities there are to help them further and ensure their future expansion. For 2016, we have a number of proposed goals for the CDBG and Home Funds. In land redevelopment, these funds will support the maintenance of the 1,469 properties that we currently have within the city's land bank. These funds will be used to continue to secure, board, code, and mow all of our land bank properties. In Economic Development, we plan to assist 165 businesses and retain or create 1,300 jobs through the CDBG funds, and make additional economic development loans. In Neighborhood Services, these funds will be used to continue supporting our five Neighborhood Pride Centers. They will help us to serve the needs of our 18-area commissions and 196 active civic associations. So these funds are used to really help us build the engagement with our neighborhoods that's critical to our success. In Housing, the Affordable Housing Opportunity Fund will support 700 houses receiving rehabilitation assistance. 55 houses will receive down payment assistance, and 200 households will receive optional relocation services should there be a crisis. With that, I have concluded my remarks, and we'll take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Director. I'm going to keep my comments and questions to the end if they arise. I'd next like to have Audrey Regan, the Director of Sexual Health and Promotion at Columbus Department of Public Health. Thank you, Ms. Regan.
Great. Thank you very much for this opportunity to update you on the Community Development Block Grant programs administered by Columbus Public Health. As you mentioned, I'm Audrey Regan, and I lead Columbus Public Health Sexual Health Promotion Unit. There are several activities that are performed with our CDBG resources, including HIV and STI screening, pregnancy screening, and parent support, as well as housing for people living with HIV and AIDS. HIV and STI screening are needed services in our community as we continue to experience a syphilis outbreak. Of all the early syphilis cases thus far in Ohio in 2015, half of them have occurred in Franklin County. By the end of 2015, we expect to see an 83% increase in the number of syphilis cases since 2013. And Columbus Public Health is responding by getting the message to healthcare providers and community members about the importance of screening and treatment. A key strategy for us to fight syphilis in our community is to offer community-based screening, and this is what CDBG enables us to do. Community-based screening is critical to offer to our residents because it addresses barriers that people encounter, such as transportation, hours, and stigma. We have a team of public health associates that go into community organizations and provide screenings. In the first nine months of 2015, there have been seven staff members who provided more than 2,700 STI screenings. They've diagnosed more than 200 cases of chlamydia and gonorrhea, 65 cases of syphilis, and nine cases of HIV, and CDBG funds one and a half of these staff members. Places that we go in the community include parks and recreation facilities, homeless and transitional housing sites, alternative education sites, community-based support service agencies, and evening clinics at Columbus Public Health. CDBG also enables support for the Pregnancy Support Program. So far in 2015, this program has served 49 pregnant and parenting women and administered 23 pregnancy tests. We recruit these women through community outreach at non-traditional educational institutions, referrals from school nurses, and homeless shelters. The 49 women who've received services have been educated on pregnancy and infant health and development. They've been linked to prenatal care and other social service agencies. We've assisted them with applying for Medicaid and WIC, and helped enroll them in GED or secondary educational opportunities. In particular, the Pregnancy Support Staff received a referral from a 25-year-old woman who had a child under the age of two. She was assigned to work with one of our outreach workers and a public health nurse who followed her throughout her pregnancy and until the child's first birthday. The staff provided mom with education, support, and linkages to community resources, and mom delivered a full-term baby boy. Mom was chosen among several applicants to attend a Diocese of Columbus Women's Retreat and focus on building self-confidence. Mom was so moved that she is now volunteering for the next year's event, and she also decided to give back to the community by becoming an outreach worker. Our staff linked her with Ohio State University's Community Health Worker Program. She completed the program, and she plans to further her education by attending Columbus State Community College in January. The support she received from our program, along with the community connections, have given her life a new trajectory. She has a plan and steps to accomplish it, and best of all, she will give back to her community. The third program is housing for people living with HIV. Achieving viral suppression is the goal for all 4,000 people living with HIV in central Ohio, and achieving viral suppression reduces the chance of spreading the infection. However, achieving viral suppression means quarterly doctor's appointments and lab tests and a strict medication therapy regimen. And if you don't have stable housing, then your ability to prioritize and effectively manage your disease is limited. CDBG, along with the HOPWA program and the Ryan White HIV Housing Program, provides supportive housing for people living with HIV. Through these programs, more than 100 households have received support in longer-term rent, and 47 households have received short-term rent or utility assistance. In conclusion, this work at Columbus Public Health is able to do because of the Community Development Block Grant and HOPWA. So I sincerely thank you for your continued support of these efforts, which allow us to protect health and improve lives in Columbus. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Regan. And our next speaker is Eric Brandon, Assistant Director, Columbus Wreckin' Parks.
Thank you, Chairman Klein. We appreciate the opportunity to present the proposed 2016 CDBG budget for the Recreation and Parks Department. The 2016 budget is submitted as $781,971. This is a 7.3% decrease from the 2015 budget. The 2016 budget funds four programs as follows. The Capital Kids After School Program, funded at $316,267. Funds are used to cover full-time staff costs at four sites, including Feddersen, Marion Franklin, Sullivan Gardens, and Beatty Recreation Centers. Each site serves approximately 30 to 35 children, grades K through 5, per day. Additionally, the department offers an eight-week summer program that continues many of the same types of programmings and activities during the summer recess. The Capital Kids Program bridges the time when children are released from school and parents get off work. The hours of 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. are the peak times for children to experiment with drugs, sex, and violence. Having kids enrolled in our program removes that temptation. Since the year 2000, our program has impacted over 3,000 participants and their families. Six program components make up the CAP Kids Program, and that is academic assistance, nutritious meals, family involvement, recreation and socialization, prevention, and life skills. The second program is our Schools Out Program, funded at $185,027. The Schools Out Program is a nine-week summer camp offered for $25 per week to income-eligible participants. Approximately 300 children ages 6 to 14 are served during the summer months at Feddersen, Thompson, Howard, and Blackburn Recreation Centers. Our third program, or our third funding element, is part-time recreation staff. This is funded at $280,677. Part-time staff provide additional recreation opportunities for children at eligible community centers. These centers include Barnett, Beatty, Blackburn, Dodge, Driving Park, Far East, Howard, Linden, Marion Franklin, and Thompson Centers. More than 1,000 classes, programs, serve more than 8,200 children, and have helped our frontline staff continue the positive work with the children who participate at our centers. The 2016 budget does not include formerly funded program called Columbus Kids Ready, Set, Learn, and we had to, this program is unfunded due to that 7.3% reduction. These three elements provide a wide range of opportunities for children and young adults and folks of all ages within Columbus and within the CDBG eligible boundaries. We appreciate the support and look forward to the continuation of these programs in 2016. We thank you for this opportunity to present our budget.
Thank you, Mr. Brandon. Gretchen, do we have any speaker slips? I know we have one more speaker, but, okay, if you want to get a speaker slip, get it to Gretchen. And our final speaker is Sarah Loken, who's the Community Relations Director at the Community Shelter Board.
Good afternoon, Chairman Klein. I'm here representing the Community Shelter Board, the collective impact organization that you've entrusted to lead our community's response to homelessness. I want to thank you for the incredible support through the use of CDBG Home and ESG Funds. These funds allow us to do three very important things for the most vulnerable citizens of Columbus. Number one is to provide emergency shelter, and those funds help pay for operating costs to do so. And beyond providing a safe and clean place to sleep, all of our shelters also offer basic services like showers, meals, healthcare, material assistance. Number two, we provide rapid rehousing with those funds. Families are helped to move out of shelter very quickly and into their own apartments where case managers- where case managers partner with them to make sure they remain stable in housing. The average family is only in shelter about 24 days, and the national average is 74 days. And finally, we are able to provide affordable supportive housing with those funds. People who've experienced long-term or repeated homelessness and disabilities are helped with supportive housing, which is an apartment with healthcare, employment, and other supports. And by developing that kind of housing, we've made a major impact in addressing long-term homelessness and have been able to save money for jails, hospitals, and other systems. Because of your support, we can help more than 12,000 people experiencing homelessness every year in Columbus, and one of those 12,000 is a woman named Ashley. She has two sets of twins ages 10 and 11. She has her hands full. Ashley lost her home when her apartment fell into disrepair. Her bathtub actually fell from the second floor down into the first floor. Thankfully, no one was hurt. She had been paying her landlord for repairs that had never been made. She took her kids and went to stay with a family member. That ended up not being a safe environment either, so eventually, they came to emergency shelter. Ashley remembers feeling very frustrated and upset. She cried the first night that she was in shelter. She had a job, but what she really needed was help finding safe housing that she could afford, and a landlord who would rent to her despite her spotty rental history. Ashley found the help she needed while staying at one of our shelters. She got connected to a landlord who was willing to work with her. She found a safe apartment, and she received help with the security deposit, the first month's rent, and utilities. And I want to share with you just a brief statement that Ashley made. She said, "My message to you is faith without works is dead. My family is safe in housing now, but my work is not done. I've got a personal development plan with goals around my credit, my education, full-time work, and fitness. I may have experienced loss in my life, but my future is bright." So thank you for helping young mothers like Ashley rebuild their lives. And if I may, I brought a photo of her for you.
Well, this will conclude our 2016 Consolidated Action Plan hearing. I think we heard some good information from all the departments. Thank you, Finance, and Development, and Health, and Reckon Parks. I really appreciate it. And then, of course, our community partners, the Community Shelter Board, as well as Habitat for Humanity, for stepping up and participating and providing part of this conversation. Director Rakowski, can you, when's the close date for public input? What's the end date?
November 1.
November 1. So if you want to give the city its, your input on how, what you heard tonight, or how we can continue to shape this plan that we want it, you can email it, you can call the city, you can look on the website, the information's there. So we really appreciate the work that the administration has done, and of course, my colleague, Councilmember Tyson, who chairs Finance, and Councilmember Page, who chairs Reckon Parks. All of this is a team effort to push out this consolidated plan to serve the citizens of Columbus. So that concludes our hearing. Thank you.